To be closed today, no issues. Okay. No problem. Good. We start with that. Now it's just like open the door. I know, I know. No, I'd be like. I'm not numbered by names here either. I'm not numbered by names. No, it's written into my script, so I'm good. If it's in my script, it's getting said. If it's not, it's not. Eric's in my script, so he's coming.
Good morning and welcome to the June 21st meeting. Everybody good to go? So we're June 21st work session. I like to call the meeting to order. I guess I'm supposed to gavel, right? Okay, everybody's going to help me today because we're down a couple commissioners. So we do have Commissioner Vice or Vice Mayor Kynes is attending the meeting via Zoom. And actually Mayor Rogowski is attending the tourist development board. So it had to be rescheduled, so it's in conflict. So I do need to ask for a motion so we can do an excused absence for Mayor Rogowski.
No move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the motion passes. And so at this point Nikki, if you'd lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Commissioner Frini, if you'll also want to just take a motion to accept Commissioner Kynes' participation virtually, since you have a quorum present that will allow her to fully participate and vote in the meeting.
No move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that motion passes. Thank you Nikki, appreciate that. And welcome Vice Mayor Kynes by Zoom. Okay, so I think we're going to go right to presentations right now. And we have Eric McNeil on Dunedin Scottish Arts Foundation Highland Games update. Welcome Eric.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Eric McNeil. I'm the president of the Dunedin Scottish Arts Foundation. Thank you for having me. I wanted to come before you and update you on some of the things that have been happening. We've had fortunately, after two very frustrating springs, we've had a very good last few months. The Dunedin Highland Games took place on April 2nd and despite a forecast of bad weather, we ended up with a pretty nice day for most of the day. We had a very strong crowd. We believe we had almost 7,000 people in attendance in total, which is almost, I think it's a record for us. I'm not sure we've ever been quite that big. And the day and the forecast was not that favorable. So we were really pleased with that. As a result, as you know, the event operates as a fundraiser for the Scottish arts programs in our community. And we were very proud to be able to make a donation of $12,667 to each, the middle school, the high school, and the city of Dunedin pipe bands following the.
Fantastic.
We were, it was very, and as you can imagine, particularly with the school bands, that was very welcomed as they're coming off a few years that have been tough. So it's very, it was very positive. We're looking forward to hopefully growing the event and next year. Part of that, our success this year had to do with the success and benefit that we received from a grant through Visit St. Pete Clearwater, the elite funding grant. And a special thanks to Mayor Rogowski for nudging us in that direction and for Vince, Vince's help in Parks and Recreation who helped us craft that grant and put it together and make a strong presentation. That grant allowed us to spend a lot more money on marketing than we've ever been able to do before. And it definitely, it definitely paid off. Part of, part of that grant, being awarded that grant connects to an economic impact study that Visit St. Pete Clearwater conducts. I think I sent that, you got, you got sent those details, but if not, I'll make sure you get them. The head, the big sort of tagline headline information is that they determined that the overall economic impact for the Dunedin Highland Games this past year was $8.1 million into the entire local economy, which is like wow.
Amazing.
A small little event, but you know, it's not. And that involves all sorts of things. People buying gas and Uber rides and hotels and restaurants and all sorts of things. So it's pretty encouraging. We were pretty encouraged by that and excited to continue to see that grow. So thank you for all your help and support to help make that event what it is and allow us to continue to grow. Let's see, next is just keeping you informed, we, thanks to the support from the Aid to Org grant from the city, we are, the Dunedin Scottish Arts Foundation this year is finally putting on a week-long college camp for piping and drumming here in our community. That's going to run the week of June 26th to July 1st. We're very excited about that. We're partnering with the Taoist Tai Chi Society on Lockley Street to hold the classes there, which has been a really positive relationship. And we are looking at ways during the week of sort of integrating some of the evening events, recitals and performances and stuff into the community that will be welcome for anyone to attend. And I will certainly share all those details with all of you. If you'd like to come out and check out some piping and drumming during the week, it should be pretty cool. And so we're pretty excited about that. Following that, as you hopefully know, the city of Dunedin Grade One Band will be traveling back over to Scotland this August to attend the World Pipe Band Championships in Glasgow. We're very pleased to have been able to help support that effort through the foundation donation after the Highland Games. There's a plan in the works of a bit of a fundraiser event at the end of July to help the band get ready to go and add some additional funds. And once that becomes solidified, I will certainly share all of that, that information with all of you as well. This will be the first time that the band will compete in Grade One. The band is one of only two Grade One bands in the USA right now, so we're, we're pretty excited about it. And that event is scheduled to be broadcast and livestreamed on the BBC to an international audience. And we're excited to represent the community at that event. And then just the final thing is that we're back with our Celtic Festival on the Saturday. It's always a Saturday right before Thanksgiving. Saturday, November 19th will be our Celtic Festival this year. It should be, hopefully we have beautiful weather and it ends up being a great day. We're working on a couple of plans to improve that event and tweak that event, change things around a little bit. And yeah, looking forward to a good day and hopefully we'll have tickets up for sale in the next month or so and more information coming out over the next few months.
Great, thanks Eric. Anybody have any questions or?
I do.
I thought you did.
I do. The world championships historically, really recent history, there's always been a watch party. And for those of us that won't be able to make the trip, so I'm, I'm wondering if there's anything like that planned.
It's a great question. The last time, the last few times that we did that, it was of course at the, at the hall when the DSAF had that hall. I know that several years before then, there was a watch party. I think it was at.
Flanagan's.
Flanagan's, yeah. And really any place, so that's a great question. And I'm sure there will be some, something going together to try to put that on. Really it just needs a place that's willing to be open at that time of day and.
The city also has movies in the park, so I don't know, maybe I might suggest working with Flanagan's or another business, but also maybe Parks and Rec to see if we can't show it in Pioneer Park or something like that and bring in some food trucks or.
Yeah, it'd be tough to, tough to do it in the park in the afternoon. Yeah, I don't know.
In August.
With the way, yeah, with the way the screen.
Oh, yeah, that's true. That is true.
Because there would be, you could see it in the morning probably at the start of it, because it would start at like first performance, depending on when the draw comes out, which we won't know for about another month or so. We could play as early as 10:30 or 11 o'clock in the morning there, which is 6:00 a.m. here. So.
That's okay.
Yeah.
It's all good. And typically it's a two-day event, right? Qualifier on Friday.
It is, so the, it will be a two-day event Friday and Saturday for Grade One only. So this will be our first time playing both Friday and Saturday. Because, because the numbers are down for the event, you have to get to 18 Grade One bands in order for there to be a qualifier. And there's no bands traveling over this year from New Zealand or Australia. So they expect, there's four bands from North America, ourselves, a band from Houston, one from Vancouver, and one from Toronto, who are traveling over from North America. So they'll be joining the 10 Grade One bands that are in Scotland for a total of 14. So there will only be 14 Grade One bands playing this year. So they're basically, basically it's harder because all four events will count into the final result as opposed to just being a qualifier and then a final. So it's all four events, you got to be ready with a lot of material.
All right, well just keep us informed on any watch party details.
That's good.
Yeah, and don't be afraid.
I'm sure we'll all be happy to show up at 5:30 in the morning.
Sure. Especially if Ed Delora's there, right?
It's always better when Ed's there.
John, did you have any questions?
No.
You're good?
Thank you for the update. Appreciate it very much.
Absolutely, thank you.
Eric, I did want to say that I'm pretty sure like one of the things on the agenda today at tourist development was the, one of the types of grants, the grants that they give out. So I know that the mayor was not going to miss the meeting even though God switched, so she dumped our meeting in favor of protecting, you know, the types of grants you guys got. So anyway, so we, it's a great job and it's exciting, the job you guys did. We were there, we were caught in the rain, we were underneath some of the tents, but we were amazed by how the bands kept playing, everything kept happening and, but you got enough of the day in before that happened too.
Yeah, it was kind of, there was, it was a kind of a, if it's okay to share, it was a cool story, I thought it was one of the coolest things I saw, was when it started pouring and everything kind of stopped. And the city of Dunedin Grade Three Band was the next band that was ready to come up. And when they got out, they came, rain came, it was just pouring. And when they started to play, you could hear the crowd from all around the whole park just went wild for them. It was like, it was kind of cool that everybody was so excited to see the band.
It was cool. I don't think anybody could believe it. It was just a really, it was a neat look. I mean, it was a neat, you know, we're going to keep going.
Yep.
Lightning and thunder was kind of scary, but.
Yeah, we need to shut down for that, but.
Commissioner Kynes would like to say something.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, and sorry Deborah, I'm forgetting you're there, but go ahead Deborah.
No, I just wanted to wish them all congratulations. It's such an honor, the people that you're going to be competing against. And Godspeed and bring it home.
Thank you, we'll do our very best.
Thanks Eric, appreciate it. All you guys do.
Thank you.
All you do. Great. Okay, next is citizen input. So if anyone in the audience wishes to speak on a topic that's not in the agenda, you can come forward now. Seeing no one, I'll move to the consent agenda. Consent agenda, we have approved the minutes for the May 5th, 2022 regular commission meeting, the May 17th work session, boards and committee appointments for disability advisory committee, historic preservation advisory committee. We have Pinellas County easement request for county utility water meters and appearances located at the city of Dunedin Emergency Operations Center. We have the Scottsdale Bluffs Community Entryway Right-of-Way Use Agreement. And we have the Clearwater Ferry Services Second Amendment to their original agreement. So do I have a motion to approve or does anyone want to pull anything off of the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Commissioner Kynes?
I said second.
And so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you unanimously. Okay, and then on our action items, we have to select a member of the Dunedin Commission to serve as a 2022 voting delegate memo. This is FLC Annual Conference, there'll be, you'll be a voting delegate at that conference August 11th through the 13th. And I'm going to turn that over to Rebecca.
Thank you, Commissioner. So we did receive a letter on May 11th from Aaron Russell at the Florida League of Cities requesting that we destitute one of our officials to cast their votes at the annual business session. We do need to get a unanimous vote on a person because it can just be one of the elected officials. And so, so I'm just looking to get a vote on who you want to send as your voting delegate.
So I mean, we can, if there's any questions about it, Rebecca first, or anybody have any questions about what it is first? And Vice Mayor, if you do, I think we all understand what it is. So anybody want to suggest or volunteer?
The mayor, the mayor isn't here.
I'm relatively certain, I'm relatively certain she'd be happy for one of us to take it on, but if no one wants to take it on, she could be delegated.
I know, I was blessed with the honor last year.
We could bless you again.
Actually, that's kind of what I was thinking that, you know.
I'm a morning person. I'm, I'm fine with that.
Commissioner Kynes, this is your, shall we say, interesting presentation after more than 20 years. Did you have an interest in doing that?
You know, actually, I, because, you know, I'm going to be really sort of off the line of leaving in November, so, you know, I really think one of you that's going to be here should begin, should continue to get to know people and, you know, sort of spread your wings more at the Florida League of Cities. So I really think it's better that someone's going, that will be at the next annual convention even, that they just really began to sort of infiltrate Florida League of Cities. So I, I think it would be fine for one of you all, and I certainly support that.
I just wanted to bring that out in case you did.
Certainly sounded like a no though, didn't it?
Very smooth. She was very smooth. That was experienced talking there.
She got out of that nicely.
Okay, so.
Well, John, did you have a desire?
No, I'm, if someone wishes to do it, then I'm very, very fine with that.
I don't know that anybody here's going to wish to do it.
So, because, so do you have a motion?
Well, you know, I do have one little thing. You know, John is our liaison to our FL Suncoast League.
Suncoast League.
So it, I don't know, you know, it's totally between you two, but that's his liaison is with the Suncoast League. So, you know, I remember how John Dogleone, that was his real passion, and he really started off by representing the league, the Suncoast League. So it's between you, Jeff and John, and, you know, you all work it out.
I think that's a good point.
That is a very good point.
It's not that I'm seeking this, I can assure you, but that's a great point. And I should, I should probably stand up for that.
Yes.
And that's a good point. Thank you, Ms. Deborah. So I would be willing to do it.
Very good.
So based on that, do I have a motion?
Have a, yes.
No move.
Okay.
Vice Mayor motion?
And the motion is for Commissioner.
The motion is, yes, okay. So yeah, so you've moved the motion for John Torn to be our representative at the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference as a voting delegate.
Yes.
Cool.
Exactly what I said. Thank you for quoting.
All right, well actually Deborah made the motion, you made the second, so I think we're good, right?
Yes.
Correct. We need to vote.
All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously. Okay. So next is our proposed agenda, moving right along guys. So on the proposed agenda, if you've had a chance to look at it, obviously we have the typical stuff, and then we have Dunedin Marina Electrical Operations Project, Social Service Advisory Committee continuance, proposed agenda for July 26th. We have workshop items, a city commission line item budget workshop, discussion of the downtown looper. We have, we've postponed something to this too, right?
We have, yes, the artisan incubator.
The artisan incubator would be added to that. Okay, so, be a significant meeting. So does that look good to everybody?
Yes.
So if I can have a motion?
No move.
Second.
Okay, and so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that motion passes unanimously.
So it usually, as you know, we keep it down to two workshop items. I don't think your line item budget's going to take very long. That's the city commission's line item budget. And then the discussion of the downtown looper is simply an update of where we are. We've funded the business plan initiative and we just want to go over that with all of you, because we have to go to RFP. So it's essentially an update, it shouldn't take that long.
Great. No, I actually forgot what that was. I'm thinking, that took me back to when commissions actually did line item reviews of, yeah, the whole city budget, so.
It was called Count the Pencils.
Yeah, right, that was wild times. That was wild times. Staff would not want to go through that again. Okay, so on the workshop items, do we have to formally postpone those or? Because I guess we'll go ahead for, so Douglas Avenue Scout and Street Parking Garage, staff is recommending postponing that discussion. So do I have a motion for?
To a date uncertain.
To a date, okay, all right.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
So Commissioner Frini, if I may, because I just want to explain why it is we're requesting that be postponed.
That would be great.
The, as you know, when we bring a capital project of this size to all of you, we have the finance plan attached to the capital project. I want, I want a little bit more time to meet with county officials and specifically the county administrator to talk about the revenue stream for the county TIF, to pay for the debt that we're going to issue for the garage. So it's, it's, right now, the finance plan is CRA and Penny for Pinellas to pay for the garage, but I just need to have that solidified before we bring it to you.
Anybody have any questions about that, or we're good? Okay, thank you. And I don't think we have to take a vote on this, but the, obviously we already just put our artisan incubator over to our next meeting, so.
Right.
Okay, so informational items, we're going to go to commission discussion, and of course that's commission, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, did you have something?
You know, I think we do have to vote to move it to a date certain.
You mean, we actually just put it on our proposed agenda. The artisan incubator, we put on our proposed agenda for next meeting, so I think.
Since it's not an ordinance, it hasn't been advertised, so that's really the benefit of continuing to a date certain is not needing to re-advertise. But, but I agree, if we know the date, then we can certainly let everybody know.
Yeah, so it's going to be July 12th, because we just approved it on the post.
So we don't need the motion Nikki, you're just saying.
Right, you would do that when you have an ordinance or something that's already been advertised or noticed, and then that way everyone who, the official action, you know, is known, that everyone who may have come for that item today knows to come back at that particular time, but you don't need a motion to take that.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
No, you're fine.
That's okay, but it's July 12th, so, you know, tell the world. There we go, we'll, we'll talk about that, obviously that's an important item. Okay, so again, commission discussion, this is topics of concern or future issues that you wish to be addressed, so I'll turn to Jeff. Do you have anything? John?
I have nothing.
Okay, and I have nothing. Okay, so I'm going to go to city clerk update.
Thank you, Commissioner. So actually I have two things. I thought maybe I would introduce Michelle as she's sitting here and on TV and nobody might not recognize her. I know she's met most of you at the tour last week, but, so I have Michelle Wells, who's the new deputy city clerk. She's been with us just a week and a day, and she comes to us from the city of Homestead down south. And so we welcome and we're keeping her real busy already to get her started, but it was nice with us being a little shorthanded that she was able to sit up with here today so she can kind of see how it all is handled. And so the other thing that I had, I just wanted to do a quick update on the election candidates. So we do have two running for seat two, Stephanie Joines and Robert Walker. And we do have three running for seat four. We have Jeff Gao, Jeffrey Michael Miller, and Michael Lynn Bryant just came in to his initial paperwork on Friday. And so I just wanted to give that update so that you're aware.
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
For that update. And I realize in commission discussion that, Vice Mayor, I skipped over you, sorry. I'm getting used to running the meeting and paying attention to a Zoom. So did you have anything for commission discussion?
Nothing.
Okay, I apologize for that. Okay, city manager update.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Sorry, isn't it?
The city manager's update is, is attached to the agenda item. I did want to talk a little bit about our in-service day though.
Oh, good.
We had our in-service day last Thursday, on the 16th, and it was our first ever citywide in-service day. And it was put together by a group of employees, the United Dunedin Employee Committee. So it was essentially a day put together for employees by employees. And we started off the day with a description of Juneteenth and what it is, and actually a TED Talk on the economic impact of racism on the country, on municipalities in particular. It's a very good case study that we heard. Then we went out and did community service in 16 different points throughout the city. We cleaned up the entire Pinellas Trail in every single park, and most of the parks were pretty darn clean already. So I'm very proud to say, we had to really, really look for the garbage, but there was some, a lot of cigarette butts and that type of a thing. So we're very appreciative to the city commission for allowing us to do that. In the afternoon, after lunch, we had three food trucks, and it was, it was fun to see the camaraderie amongst the employees. We really don't get that much of an opportunity to work with and meet each other outside of our workplace in a more relaxed atmosphere. Then we heard from Vinnie Louisi, and very grateful for him to, for his talk on essentially the history of Dunedin and the black community itself within Dunedin. As you know, he's currently doing some video work on that and the history of the black community in Dunedin. And then we had a panel in the afternoon, and the panel was, I thought it was a very powerful afternoon, and it was city employees from all different places. I think five different continents were represented and talking about their experiences, either with racism, discrimination, or just immigration to this country. It was very powerful, I think, for the employees to hear firsthand from, from their colleagues, folks that they had no idea that some of these, these, there were these issues in their lives. So I was, the attendance was fantastic throughout the city. It really was. Everybody who was supposed to be there was there, which I was very grateful for. The, I was grateful to Commissioner Gao for spending the day with us as well, and I hope you enjoyed it.
It was wonderful. It was wonderful.
So, and especially grateful to Teresa Smalling, who put it together. And I know that she was very nervous about how the day would go, because there were all sorts of areas that we could fail actually for the first ever citywide in-service day. And we did not. I think that we came out of that a much stronger organization than we were even going into it. I did spend the day in the field with all of the employees and did every activity as well, so I got a lot out of it myself. And what I got out of it most of all is how dedicated our workforce is to, to the city and to the residents that they serve. So we're going to do an after-action of the employee in-service day. We want to do it again next year and see what we can do better, because you can always do some things better, obviously. So again, I'm very grateful to all of you for letting us do that. I didn't hear from the residents as much as I thought we would, maybe all of you did, but I think that they were actually very tolerant as well of having our city facilities closed. So thank you very much.
Great. Good, well, that's awesome. I mean, I don't know if anybody wants to comment, Jeff, you were there, did you want to say anything?
Just to echo her comment, I, it was wonderful. I guess the best part for me was actually the next day, and talking to some of the employees that really did, you know, they've had their 24 hours to, you know, to analyze and rethink. And it was such a wonderful response from the employees I talked with, that they really did appreciate the event, so, and the gathering, so, it's good.
John, anything from you? Or, if you're good. Vice Mayor?
Well, you know, I was so sorry to miss that. I was really looking forward to it. I thought it was an extraordinary idea, and I was wondering, was any portion of it filmed, like the TED Talk, or is there linkage? Because I obviously missed it.
Sure, I can send all of you the link to the TED Talk. There was some video here and there, I can find out what we had. I saw Seth when we were doing the panel discussion, and.
That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah. We're going to put together a PowerPoint, and we'll probably share that with you as well at some point.
Wonderful. Thank you, and congratulations. Thank you to Teresa, and thank you, Jennifer, and I'm really so proud of the city of Dunedin.
Yeah, actually, when my discussions with you, I obviously couldn't be there, but I especially was intrigued by the panel, because I do think, and we experienced it during the Pride Week celebrations, too, you know, I always use the term, first seek to understand. And the best way to understand somebody else's shoes, regardless of who it is, is people telling their stories, because you're like, oh, jeez, I didn't realize that, or you get a chance to ask questions, or you just never know what somebody's path is unless you hear their stories. And so I think it's great. I'm really pleased with how you did it, and Teresa, I guess, gets a lot of that leadership credit, but, you know, we live in a pretty, you know, testy divisive world right now, so doing this is, but it's important. It's really important, and it's important to do it in a positive, structured way that just kind of respects everyone. So I couldn't be more pleased with what I've heard from employees and from you, so thank you.
Thank you.
Cool. Anything else, sir? You good? Okay, cool. So city attorney update.
I don't have a formal update this morning. Welcome to our new clerk. My sister was born in Homestead before my family made it up this way, so.
Thank you.
We've been all over.
Cool. Yes, welcome, if we didn't say that loud enough.
Thank you all.
And then last is commission comments. So I'll turn to Commissioner Tork.
I have nothing.
You're just quiet today, right? Very good, cool. You did a good job on all the, you know, the military, I saw on the news about one of the, what do you?
Honor flight.
Thank you, the honor flight, so that all sounded like it went pretty well.
Good number of.
Yes, congratulations.
Yeah, that's great. That's great work you're doing with that. That's so important.
I saw one report, and the report is talking, and Commissioner Tork is wandering around in the background, holding a banana.
Saying, "Oh, the photos."
Saying, "Oh, the photos." Clearly not intending to.
It's all about them. It's all about them.
Cool. And Commissioner Gao?
I, no, I have no report.
Vice Mayor Kynes?
Yes, I do. The summer classes have started at the DFAC for adults. Also, the Sizzling Summer's going on, so if you have little people or bigger people, bigger children, young adults, it's a great program. So it's going on now. With the, I do want to say ADM II, which is the special exhibit people there, since we did get the grant, they will be starting to put together the actual exhibit for the digitalization, Kellogg Digitalization Project. It will be in the glass, it will be housed, let's say, for a while in the glass building at the glass room at the library. You know, of course, it's our fondest hopes that at some point, we'll have to get another grant. It can be a traveling exhibit. And I do want to again say, the library's just been amazing, and everybody that's worked with this project, Sharice, Vinnie, has, you know, offered to be one of the people that's sort of the expert, historical experts, the staff, and Phyllis, unbelievable. I just can't say enough about how amazing they've been. Third of all, I want to tell you all to save the date for the 50-plus-two anniversary, because, you know, we missed two years with the COVID, and which, of the History Museum, a historical society, and it will be held on November 6th at Blur, and they're already getting ready for it, and they've got a lot of plans in motion. Sharon Painter will be, she'll be chairing this event, and so save the date, November 6th at Blur for the History Museum Historical Society, big celebration.
So if it's going to be at Blur, I know it's going to be a big celebration, so that should be interesting. So. Thanks, Deborah. Okay, the only thing I had, obviously, we just finished, as well as Juneteenth, we finished a great Pride Week, and thank you to all my fellow commissioners and staff for everything that was, that went into that, but especially thank you to Greg Brady and the Chamber of Commerce, who really kind of drove everything, even though we were partners with them. They, you know, took a lot of leadership in this, and it was a lot of great events, a lot of telling, and I'll say this, because at the finale event, the mayor said it, and I thought it was really right on, which was, throughout the week, you heard a lot of stories. And again, stories that help everybody understand better the perspective of life that different people have had. So it was a great week, it was an amazing week. Thank you to the Toronto Blue Jays, who of course have always been amazing advocates for Pride, and they did it again in the kickoff night by having the game and having special jerseys and making it really a special event. So I wanted to say that. The only other thing of, I did want to say, and I mentioned this to the city manager kind of behind the scenes, and she's thinking, what's she going to say? And it just is, we talked about this a little, a few weeks ago, about our signage at our main entrance ways, and I just would kind of like staff to look at a way with our signage at our entrance ways to somehow capitalize on both the fact that, you know, our Scottish heritage and award-winning pipe bands, but also that we are spring training home to the Toronto Blue Jays and capitalize on that as well. And somehow come up, and I, you know, might take a marketing, you know, mind to somehow figure out how to put that together in a way that really looks pretty cool, because we already said our summer, our signage is getting tired, so it may be a time to kind of just rethink that, so. If my colleagues are.
If I could sort of, the only thing, and Mo, I think that's a cool idea, but I have to say that in some ways, you know, like the sign on Edgewater Drive has become almost a historic look, so I definitely think it needs refreshing, and I don't know, maybe, maybe you could add a little, a Blue Jay somewhere or something, which would sort of tie in both, which would be really fun.
Yeah, because, I mean, if you look, if you're walking along Edgewater Drive, you're walking to Clearwater, and boy, they're, you know, they're definitely putting right out there the spring training home of the Phillies. So, you know, I don't want to take anything away from the Scottish piece, but I just think somebody with a good mind like that would be able to blend those in a way that would be, you know, still keep the history and, you know, all that, but also blend the thinking and make it kind of a combined sign, so to speak, so.
Our fresh, it definitely needs some freshening, you know, repaint, little cleaning up, new lights, whatever, and, you know, if you could incorporate somehow in a cool way the symbol, I think it would be fun.
Yeah, not just that one, but we have, I think, one on Highland, and, I mean, if we could look at the major entryway spots, but if everybody's okay with that being looked at.
Yeah, that's fine, just to echo, I know that the Piper, at least the one on Edgewater, is in desperate need of a lot of love and attention.
Yeah, it's tired. I looked at that again. And I think I said the seal's tired, too, very tired.
Yeah, the drones that are the top, they're broken off, and they're actually just laying on the ground behind.
He needs help.
Needs help.
Right. And I mean, hey, we can get it ready for when we're the, you know, the number one grade A, you know, grade A band as well, after all the straits. John?
I'll just make a comment, because we're in consumer, I'm sorry, we're in commission comment, just the comment side of it.
Sure.
And so I would, it's a big thing, and I think we ought to turn this over and let a lot of people have some input into this, because there's people that have other issues that are important to them. I know that we're looking at signage in general, and we're also looking at a sense of place throughout Dunedin, and so I think it's a great, I think it's a good, great comment, and I think we ought to either tee it up or readdress it or something like that, but I would like to make sure we get a lot of comment, a lot of input about that. So I respect, because it is a big thing. We do have a, we do have a nation's baseball team here, and so that is important. So I don't mean to take away from the importance, but for given directions, I would much rather leave it quite a bit open, but with that as an input. So I'll agree with that as an input.
Jennifer, anything?
Yeah. The, I mean, entry signage, entryway signage can be a huge subject, as you know, and it folds into branding and, you know, all those sorts of things. So I think that I'd like to get some clarification in terms of, you want us to revamp the existing signs? Or do you want us to look at?
No, I think we need input. We do need input.
No, no, I mean, actually, you know, I think it's very appropriate at this point for you to go back and talk maybe to Sue as in communications, and think about our branding, think about the things that, like, really, you know, I think the two things, obviously, right now, that you see currently on our entry signage wherever you go, although it's inconsistent what's where, is the, our Scottish theme and our home of the Toronto Blue Jays. You know, that's already existing. So the question really becomes, should we blend it in some way, in a way that then have kind of similar signage? Should we do something different? I mean, I think Commissioner Tork has got a valid point, but either way, we do have some tired signage out there. So if we're going to kind of redo some stuff, maybe we just rethink, are we doing it right? And probably input from communications person is the best start.
And marketing, you know, the marketing committee would be a really, would be a star.
The Public Relations Advisory Committee.
Public Relations Advisory.
Well, I think that my point is, though, is that this is a business plan initiative, and, because it's cross-departmental, there would be funding most likely associated with it, there would be a timing issue, like, when do we get it done? How do we get it done? So, if I may, I need to go back to staff and talk to staff. I just want to make sure that I understand what your expectations are as a commission, because, like I said, and those signs have been there forever, right?
Yeah, I mean, from my point of view, I have two motives here. One motive is, it's tired, and we talked about it probably a month ago. Some of the stuff's tired, so if you're going to redo it, you know, and my second one is, I think that we, you know, along with a top performing pipe band, we have, we have Major League Baseball here, and I think that we should put a little bit of, I look around at the Clearwater signs, and I think we should put a little bit more oomph into that from home of the Toronto Blue Jays.
So I agree, and I think you get a lot of input, and for example, I've always said, here we are a coastal city, here we are a city that's the only city that has a scenic view of the Dunedin Sound, sometimes referred to as the St. Joseph Sound, and of course, we have a number one beach, and we have a number one park here in Florida, and so Florida to me.
Downtown.
Yeah, Florida to me has always meant a lot of different things, lots of fun things, and I think if we could figure out some way of getting that as a message, as a sense of place, that's who we are. So that's a good question, good comment about the signage.
And maybe, you know, Vice Mayor?
Well, I'm just thinking, because, you know, this is not going to happen overnight, and we, I believe that the Piper is almost historic, you know, can we at least freshen up Edgewater Drive? I mean, we know it needs a little freshening up, and I can't imagine, we're not saying pull it out and totally redoing it, but it really needs to be painted, you know, it needs some help, and I think we could do that fairly quickly, Jennifer, I mean, before we, you know, because we're going to have to have you all, we're going to have to have a lot of discussion about this new idea.
Yep, we can have a look at it, for sure. I know that the, what do you call the things that come up, the bagpipes?
Yeah, we're not going to be fixing those. Not in any, yeah.
So we can certainly have a look at that.
And we don't even need to get a permit from the city to upgrade it, to make it.
Well, I will say, the worst part of that sign is the city seals all peeling away. It's ridiculous, and that would take, I mean, that's probably just like a very easy fix, truthfully. I'm probably, I could be minimizing it, but that seal, you know, would seem like it's an easy fix, because it's just peeling away. It looks horrible. That's the worst part of it. Okay, so thank you for listening to that, and so is there anything else for the good of the order?
I don't, you know.
Vice Mayor?
Since I'm here, I don't have to get any kind of disposition, right?
No, you're an attendee of the meeting, even though it's virtually, so you're good. You don't need any kind of special dispensation. We can give you a blessing or something, if you want. You're good, no, you're good, but thanks for asking. Okay, anything else for the good of the order?
She has a much shorter commute.
Ah, yeah, shorter commute. Okay, well, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.